Stay on time with that. Stand up like religions or flag is behind me. The flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands on its own nation, on its own land, in its own liberty and trust and for our own. It's time already to open public meeting act into the record. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice to attend meetings of public bodies which any business affecting their interests discuss their act upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education approved this meeting date. The notice of the meeting has been posted in this building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education, and Ministry of Office Building, the Montville Public School website, and advertised in the Daily Record. Okay, at this time, what I'd like to do is actually the fun part of the meeting is I'd like to call our three newest board members that were recently elected up to the front of the podium here to be sworn in for the office. Either she's to do it individually, or as a group, or any combination thereof. If you've done this once or twice before. Yeah, if you want to be sworn in first, Mr. Palmer. You can just do everybody individually. Yeah, we'll do that when you're ready. You have that time. Would you like to go first, or sir?
Okay.
Okay. I state your name. I wish to raise my hand.
I'm Michael Palmer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
To the government established in the United States and this state. Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I'm Michael Palmer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
As a member of the Board of Education.
For the office of a member of the Board of Education.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 17-1.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1.
That I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
All right. We shall have your answer. I state your name.
I'm Matthew Kane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I'm Matthew Kane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of a member of the Board of Education. Not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me God.
I state your name.
I'm Michael Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I'm Michael Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of a member of the Board of Education.
For the office, a member of the Board of Education.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1.
And not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1.
That I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all duties of that office.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
All right, at this time, we're going to perform a roll call. Montville Township Board of Education. Karen Cortolino.
Here.
Charles Brown.
Here.
Michael Johnson.
Present.
Matthew Kane.
Here.
David Modra.
Here.
John Morello.
Here.
Carmella Novy.
Here.
Michael O'Brien.
Here.
Michael Palma.
Here.
Lauren Preston. This time I'm going to read to the record the annual election results that were held on November 4th, 2014. For the office of board member, school board member, Montville Township Board of Education, Michael Johnson garnered 2,287 votes. Matthew Kane received 2,279 votes. And Michael Palma with 2,374 votes. Congratulations to all. At this time, we're going to hold the election of officers. This is for the election of President of the Montville Township Board of Education. At this time, open the floor to a motion to accept nomination to the office of President of the Montville Township Board of Education.
Point of inquiry.
Sir.
Mr. Chairman Pro Tem, two points, just to be clear, as we approach the election. Just for the record, we are operating within statute. Are we operating under what set of rules for this process, Nate, if you tonight?
This is, I know it's guided by state statute, I know that. I don't know the exact sighting off the top of my head.
It's in Robert's Rules, would be the simple way to put it. We're operating under Robert's Rules.
Yes.
We are operating in the Robert's Rules. Okay, I have a point of inquiry also, and this would be for the attorney.
Yes, sir.
Maybe you know the answer. As we proceed with the election, is there an option that is available to boards of education in New Jersey now regarding the terms that we are voting on? I.e., we have the opportunity to vote on either a year term, since we are a November election board, a year term or a half a year term? And if so, should that be clarified before the vote?
You vote for a year term. That's the...
Do we have the option to vote for a half year term, since we are a board of education that had a November election?
I don't believe that the date of the election has anything to do with the term of the board president.
You are saying that the statute, the date, the term, you're telling us that the term is not affected by the time in which a board has it, be it April or November election. Is that your ruling?
I believe that's the case, but I'll tell you what, we have the statutes with us, so I'll ask without interrupting the flow of things.
I bow to your knowledge.
Well, we'll just, we'll double check. 18815-1, at its first regular meeting, each board shall organize by electing one of its members as President and another as Vice President who shall serve for one year.
And that is the current ruling. Thank you.
Current statute.
At this time, I'm still looking for a motion to accept nomination for the office of President of the Montville Township Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate Karen Cortolino as President.
Member Palma nominates Karen Cortolino. Any other nominations for the office of President?
I would like to nominate, if you is willing to accept, Mr. Charles Brown for President of Board of Education.
Member O'Brien nominates Charles Brown for President, office of President of the Montville Township Board of Education. At this time, a motion...
Call for ballot.
At this time, a motion to close the nominations. A motion to close nominations.
I call for ballot. That would be your second. Excuse me. Oh, Mr. Tevers, I would like to withdraw. I appreciate Mr. O'Brien's nomination, but I'd be interested in maybe another office, but not the office of President at this time. But thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mr. Brown. For your comments and your recommendation of nomination.
So, no, Mr. Brown.
Withdraw my call for ballot. Withdraw it.
All right, send no other nominations at this time to call for a voice vote on the nomination of President for the Montville Township Board of Education. All in favor?
Point of order.
Sir.
Being no other candidates have been nominated, is it not correct that the Chairman Pro Tem need only cast one ballot? I mean, is it two?
That is one way to do it.
It's a point of order, that's why I...
That is one visible way to do it, but so is this.
Okay, thank you.
So again, seeing all the nominations, all in favor, unanimous voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
So, congratulations, Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Tevers. Thank you. Thank you, board members, for your continued confidence in my role as board president. And we will now move along to the election of Vice President, and I will accept a motion for office of Vice President.
I'd like to nominate Matthew Kane.
Any further nominees? Okay, closed nomination. All in favor of Dr. Kane? Aye.
Aye.
Or nay, as the case may be? Aye. Okay. Congratulations, Dr. Kane.
Thank you, Dr. Cortolino. This is an honor and privilege.
At this time, as the agenda indicates, we will be moving into closed session, so may I have, yes? Okay, two items that will be moving into closed session for, a motion to go into closer, and for the sake of the public, we will be taking action when we come out, which obviously is the rest of the agenda.
Any idea how long it will be for the public?
Half, less than 15 minutes? 15 minutes. So, motion?
Sir.
No.
Two items that we're going in for is...
Jim, do we need a motion to go back into public? No, right? Yes? No? Okay. Motion to, we open the meeting? Carmella? John? Okay. Yes, sorry. Are there, I'll open it up to the public for items on the agenda. Okay, I'll close public participation for items on the agenda. And entertain a motion for items B dot E117, sorry, five dot E117, five dot F111, K, L, M, O.
So hold.
I can repeat that. I certainly will. If you like, we can break it up, if you can try...
Paragraph E?
Paragraph five. Or number five?
Oh, capital.
Paragraph five.
Roman numeral five. So, roman numeral, let's just do it this way. Roman numeral five. It's on page three.
Page three.
Top of the page.
Organization E.
Got it? Okay, one, E117, let's do that first. So, it covers everything through page, top of page eight. Yes?
Yep.
Okay, so can I have a motion for that?
So hold.
John?
Second.
Carmella? Any discussion on those items?
Subsidiary motion.
Three.
What was your question?
Yes, with the makers of the, I'm sorry, Mike. Okay. The school physician's on it? Yeah, the school physician's on it. So, including the, so would the makers of the motion change it to what we said and include addendum item E?
So, I make a subsidiary motion.
Yes, fine. Secondary motion?
Is this, yes. My motion, seeking a second, is to lay on the table item E3.
Second for that?
What is a motion?
Wants a table number three.
E3. Not the table, I'm sorry, to lay on the table, there's a difference between the two things, okay?
What's the difference, for point of clarification? What is the difference for point of clarification?
One is, one is said that can be longer than the other, okay? I have not moved to delete, I have moved to lay on the table. That, I did that to be lying.
Can we have a definition of lay on the table for purposes of what his motion is? Because I know he'll do it as.
At the very least, lay on the table means take it out of the motion and don't act on it, yeah?
But could be acted on in later time.
It has to be removed from the table.
Right, it's removable.
Yeah, I'm not removing, no, I'm not removing from the agenda.
No, no.
I'm laying it on the table.
It's the same practical effect.
Nothing. Point of order. I make a point of order.
We're listening, Mike.
It is not, I contend with deference to the board attorney that it is not per se the same thing. I'm just laying on the table. I'm not deleting from the agenda.
Yeah, I didn't say it was the same thing, I said it had the same practical effect.
Okay.
There is a difference between lay on the table and postpone, but there is no effective difference between tabling and lay on the table. And trust me, I've looked at Robert's Rules on this issue many, many times, because I oppose laying on the table, because when you lay something on the table, it's indefinite. But we can have, we can disagree, and that's okay.
I accept your ruling.
For the, for the purposes of Mike's motion, he wants a motion to lay on the table, or as he addressed it. And we need a second. Is there a second?
To do what?
To lay E3 on the table.
I'll second.
Okay.
For a vote.
For a vote. There's no discussion when you lay something on the table. We vote on that. Okay, so there is a second? So now we need a vote.
Here's a roll call for motions to lay on the table, item E3. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Dr. Cortolino?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Dr. Kane?
No.
Dr. Modra?
No.
Mr. Morello?
No.
Mrs. Novy?
No.
Mr. Palma?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, is there any other discussion on the items included in the motion, including the addendum?
Yes.
Letter E? Yes.
I have a question on board attorney.
You have a question about what?
Number three, board attorney on page five.
Yes.
That's in this range of motions, right? I noticed that we're appointing effective January 1st through next year. I ask this question every year, even though this is a yearly appointment, if we board it, or if a new wisdom ever wanted to change, they would just have to give how much notice to you?
I answer this question the same way or not?
The same answer.
The ethics of the New Jersey Supreme Court say that a client may discharge a lawyer whenever they want, so it doesn't take any particular notice.
The other thing I...
So, in other words, you're fired.
Don't bother coming back.
Right, that's right.
The other thing was, maybe on the next business committee meeting, Mr. Tevers, I'd like to look at the attorney's summaries for the last two fiscal years, because I know according to what the breakdown is, that we're appointing them on this curious or this going into negotiations, and I think the board would be appreciative to know exactly what's being spent there.
I believe negotiations is included in their cap amount.
Yes, well, there's no amount of money listed on his proposal for negotiations, Karen.
It's included in the cap.
But I thought it said plus special.
No, plus special ed and plus construction. Am I correct?
No.
No.
Why I got that wrong?
The only two things that are excluded from the cap are special ed and tenure.
Not even construction?
No.
Ah, excellent.
It says including special ed and tenure, correct? So, we know what that is, we can subtract from the total, you know, we can handle that. I'm sure the business office, you just got a great audit, so I'm sure you can handle that, of course.
Any other questions? Comments? Roll call.
Mr. Morello?
Yes.
Mrs. Novy?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
I am on all items, except I have stayed on item, roman numeral five, E3.
Mr. Palma?
Yes.
Dr. Kane?
Yes.
Yes, except I'm staying on E3. Okay. Motion for items F1 through 11. And I stopped at 11, just so the board is aware, because I am going to ask for motion to postpone F17, if you'd like that included, I can make that all one motion. Motion F1 through 11 and postpone F12 through 17, which are the appointments for committees, et cetera. So we have some time to get requests in. Is that okay? Whoever wants to make that motion?
So hold.
John, second. Carmella?
These are up to number 17, Karen.
Yes, Charlie, we're postponing 12 to 17. Any discussion? Since F11 is the code of ethics, now we in appropriate time to recite them?
Yes.
John or Mike, would you like to start? It's on page 10.
Thank you.
And for Michael's sake, we're required to adopt the code of ethics, and our board has chosen to read them aloud, every organization. John, do you want to start? John?
Sure. A, I will uphold enforcement laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education, and the court orders pertaining to schools, desired changes should be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, degree, sex, or circumstance.
I will confine my board's action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only if the board is consulted on, and will be affected by them.
I will carry out my responsibility not to administer in schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that they are well run.
I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education, and we will make no personal promises nor take any private action which may compromise the board.
I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interest of partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain for the gain of friends.
I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, would needlessly enter individuals or the schools, but in all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools.
I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available on our consideration and recommendation of the chief administrator of all schools.
Aye, I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties. And officially, one of my favorites, I will read again, letter F. I refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interest of partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain, for the gain of friends, always like that.
J, I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, will act on such complaints at public meetings only after failure of administrative solution.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, Mr.?
Mr. Morello?
Yes.
Mrs. Snowby?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
I will yes on everything except number four. I'll abstain on that, as everyone knows, my son, not everyone, but he's been working with Lakeland Bank well before I got on the board, and I think in order of transparency, I want to make that note, Jim, and I will be abstaining on that.
Mr. Tevers?
I vote yes.
Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Kane?
Yes.
And Dr. Corleone?
Yes. Motion for items K, L, M, O.
What about J?
Sorry, I... Vote J, thank you, Mike. Very good. Okay, motion for items K, L, M, O, including the addendum items J and M.
Second.
Who, who motion?
I'm going to go with my turn, second.
Oh, you're waiting for me, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mrs. Snowby?
Yes.
Mr. Morello?
Yes.
Mr. Grau? Yes. Mr. Johnson? Yes. Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien? Just for clarification, we're voting on the addendum. The addendum? J. And M. That's correct.
Well, we're also voting on K, L, M.
On the regular gen.
On the regular gen.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Excuse me. Dr. Kane?
Yes.
Dr. Corleone?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Any report on the superintendent? J, we're sorry.
If anything, report. Anything you want to say?
If you want to report, I have it.
Jay, why don't you, instead of me giving mine, actually I don't have one, but why don't you, why don't you, why don't you briefly give yours? Give us the good part.
No problem, I'll keep it short. Good evening, everyone. Starting off with sports, winter sports are off to a great start. Yesterday, the boys and, the girls and boys basketball team defeated Morris Hills, and the boys continue their dominance with their record now at six and one. Wrestlers took third place in the Winapi Valley Tournament over the break. Freshman Connor Matron and senior Michael Klasser took first in their weight class, and the, and coach Krip is very impressed, I'm not sure, but they're actually competing right now in the gyms. Yesterday, the winter track team competed. John Lee and Alex Rogers won the Morris County Shot Foot Relay. James Haymeyer, Cole Anderson, Steve Brizio, and Dan Shaw came in third place in the sprint men's. Leanna Saucer, Amanda Moro, Lea Wiz, and Blith Haymeyer came in fourth in the four times two hundred relay, and Michelle Galoko, Amanda Moro, Leanna Saucer, and Blith Haymeyer came in third in the sprint men's. For clubs, DECA Regionals is tomorrow, and we're hoping to advance many participants onto the state competition. It's a business club, and students will be competing in events such as marketing and finance. They will start the day off with taking a multiple choice test, then have a role play, and based on their scores, it will be chosen whether or not they will advance to states. This weekend, the forensics team will be competing in three national tournaments. Firstly, all debaters on the team will be attending the Newark Science Invitational, in which debaters from all across the country come to compete. Secondly, the interpretation of public address competitors will be attending a tournament at Shamaan High School in New York, which will also feature large competitive pools. And thirdly, seniors Jay Serat and Noah Winefach, as well as juniors James Burnett, will be attending the Sun Invitational Round Robin and Sun Invitational Tournament in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. I'll be competing in extemporaneous speaking. Noah Winefach will be in original war story, and James Burnett will be in dramatic performance. The Round Robin is invitation only, and invites the top ten to sixteen competitors in the nation to score off with one another. Following the Round Robin, they'll then compete in a national tournament as well. And with all three tournaments, the entire team is very excited. For the school, students are getting back into regular routines after a fantastic break, and more and more seniors are beginning to hear back from colleges, and as the results are pouring in, they're excited for their future plans. And going forward, students will be fighting for midterms, getting into the playoffs for winter sports, and making official comments decisions.
Thank you, Jay, and congratulations.
Thank you. Good luck, Jay.
Jay, good luck in Florida.
Appreciate it.
May I comment on our report?
Absolutely.
Prior to the meeting, we were having a discussion, and just as a suggestion to members of the board, we were talking about our basketball team and our hockey team, both, right? And the home games, they're really worth coming out to see, our basketball team this year, if you haven't seen them play. I believe they're already five and one now?
Six and one.
Six and one, okay, they're six and one, and that's really interesting players, really something to see.
Girls or boys?
Boys, but the girls are also doing great. That's actually my opinion, it's not the girls' game.
That's no excuse.
With this meaning, it was a great excuse, right, then? Um, thank you, Jay. Neil Business, additional reports, general board comments, or new business? Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Comment? No? Melissa Benno, Ford Hill Press wrote to Waco. A couple of meetings ago, or maybe the last meeting, it was mentioned that the midterm schedule might be changed end of January, and I wondered if that was still going to happen, or being considered, or whatever.
I don't know, I don't know, Andrea, have any recollection of this, and certainly Mr. Sanford is the person to get in touch with, or any of the assistant principals or supervisors, but...
It was mentioned in the curriculum instruction and technology report that they had discussed it at a faculty meeting, but it was just in the discussion phase. Okay, seeing no one else is from the public? Motion to adjourn?
So hold. Second.